We're going to call to order the Hanson Planning Board meeting for July 10, 2023. Time and place being 6:30 here at the Select Board Meeting Room in the lower level of Town Hall. First order of business is for me to read the recording preamble. I hereby call on July 10, 2023, a meeting of the Town of Hanson Planning Board to order at 6:30 p.m. I would also like to announce for those that are in attendance that this meeting is being recorded for distribution on the WHCA dot TV. As well as some administrative things for this evening's meeting, please, if you have a cell phone, can you silence your cell phone? That's for the board members as well. And if you're in attendance, please make sure that you've signed in on the visitor sheet, and that's with your name and address. We're going to do, making sure that the minutes annotate that all board members are present, as well as the town planner and the town administrative assistant. Call to order is now finished, so we're going to go on to our agenda with our public hearing at 6:30 p.m. Application for approval to a private way, request for continuance, Snow Street in conjunction with proposed construction activity at Zero Snow Street, assessment map one, lot 1282 inclusive, has been filed by Alan Diaz Trustee in accordance with Massachusetts General laws, Chapter 40a, Section 81m of the subdivision control law, and Section 12 via the Hanson Zone Bylaws. Town Planner.
Mr. Diaz.
Mr. Ellis, the likely recluse of choose himself. Please reflect on the minutes. Thank you, Mr. Ellis.
Mr. Diaz filed the request for an extension continuance, I'm sorry, on July 5, 2023. He provided us a letter dated July 5, 2023, Hanson Planning Board, regarding adequate expedition map one, lot 1282, Snow Street, Hanson, Mass. Dear Members, please be advised that I am respectfully requesting the above referenced petition be postponed until the Board's first meeting in August 2023, respectfully submitted, Alan Diaz Trustee. We also received via email a letter from his attorney, Walter Sullivan of Sullivan and Cumberford, PC, Attorneys at Law, 80 Washington Street, Building B, Suite Number Seven, Norwell, Mass. Letter is dated July 6 to Antonio DeFrias, PLS Town Planner, Hanson, Town of Hanson. Regarding Alan Diaz Trustee, private way application map one, lot 1282 inclusive of Snow Street. Dear Mr. DeFrias, we represent the applicant, Alan Diaz Trustee, with respect to the above referenced matter, which is currently scheduled for a hearing on July 10, 2023. Unfortunately, we are scheduled to appear before the Hingham Planning Board at the same time and are requesting that this hearing be postponed until the earliest date in August for the planning board. I would appreciate it if you would contact me and let me know whether or not this would be feasible. Very truly yours, Walter B. Sullivan.
Thank you. Tentative the first date in August, depending on what we vote on, but tentative it's 9/14.
Yes.
Second date. What's the will of the Board?
I'm sorry, did you say 8/14?
9/14.
9/14.
8/14.
I'm sorry, 8/14. Thank you for the correction, 8/14. Thank you very much. I'm already into September. What's the will of the Board?
I'll make the motion to continue the meeting until 8/14, 2023.
Motion has been made by Mr. Cohen to continue to the tentative date of 8/14, 2023, is for a second. Second motion has been made by Mr. Cohen, seconded by Mr. Benanado. Any discussion, reverse the motion. Seeing non-holds affair is signified by saying aye. Aye, opposed. And we have one abstention, 4-0-1. Great. See the applicant back on the 14th. Wonderful. 8/14. Thank you. Seeing that the time is 6:35, we'll move on to our agenda in regards to our public hearings. For another public hearing at 6:35, continue public hearing request for continuance, Meadowbrook Farms Residential Subdivision, Zero County Road, assessment map seven four, block zero, block seven and eight. Applicant is Ellis Building and Developments, Representative Morse Engineering Company. Town Planner. Should we grab Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
I'll go again.
Thank you.
Let the record show Mr. Ellis returning at 6:35 p.m.
Mr. Ellis, we move on to 6:35 item on our agenda for a continuous public hearing request for continuance, Meadowbrook Farms Residential Subdivision, Zero County Road, assessment map seventy-four, block zero, block seven and eight, for the Ellis Building and Developments. Applicant and Representative Morse Engineering. And as we've discussed, or look plate, remember Ellis does not have any connection with Ellis Building and Development. Town Planner.
I received a request for an extension, or I'd say a continuance for the Meadowbrook subdivision from Jeff Hassett, dated July 5, 2023. I, Jeff Hassett, hereby grant the Town of Hanson Planning Board an extension of time for Board action and/or rendered decision on a subdivision plan entitled Meadowbrook Farm until July the 24, 2023. Mr. Hassett also sent along an email explaining why they were asking for the continuance. This is dated July 5, 2023, 11:17 a.m. Hi, Tony, please continue to the next available hearing. What is that date of that meeting? To give you an update, we met with the conservation agent and their peer review consultant last week to discuss an approach to the outstanding comments. The most significant comment expressed by both Allen and Majors and Verdantis is the groundwater separation slash mounding analysis. We discussed raising the lower basin by two feet so that it will have four feet of groundwater separation, eliminating the requirement for a mounding analysis. We will only take credit for infiltration in this area with greater than four feet of what groundwater separation. Allen and Majors found this approach to be acceptable, and we are currently making the changes, Jeff Hassett, PE. So they, they met, as they say, with the conservation agent, so they're doing some redesign. Verdantis's second peer review also expressed concerns regarding groundwater mounding analysis. They have a copy of that second peer review, so they're in process now of designing and addressing those comments, so they're hoping to have them completed for the 24th meeting.
Okay, great. What is the will of the Board?
Continuation.
Right, in regards to continuation.
Sorry, would that also be the August 14 meeting?
They, they would like to have the July 24 meeting.
Oh, July 24. I'll make the motion to continue the Meadowbrook Farms Residential Subdivision meeting to July 24.
There's a motion on the floor to continue by Mr. Cohen, further request to the tentative 7/24 Planning Board date 2023.
That's seconded.
Motion has been made in second by Mr. Kement. Any discussion in regards to that motion? Seeing non-holds affair is signified by saying aye. Aye, opposed. 5-0, Tony, for the continuance. All right, we'll be ready at 6:40 or so for item number four in your packet. Continuation, approval not required, Plan Liberty Street and Spring Lane, map 82, lot 1-2 and lot 14B. Applicant Gary Lundgren, Plan prepared by Land Planning Incorporated. I did review the minutes of the last meeting, and I did want to make sure that we had a discussion topic tonight amongst the Board members. Could I get the book? Thank you very much. So Board members, in reference to the chair that's before you, one of the things that we do need to take into consideration is the effective endorsement of recording of a previous A&R. Specifically, the A&R that was constructively approved by the town clerk, and possibly to further compound the A&R timeframe, we'll have to find out whether it's effective or not, is the 81X that was put on file down at the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds. Specifically, that the A&R that was put on file that had constructive approval back, I do believe, and we'll check the record here in a moment, I believe it was 2021, June of 2021, that basically freezes the plan, the land. So we haven't affected, we have endorsed A&R, constructive endorsed A&R, so I have a, I have a concern in regards to the application of the general law, and this application coming before. Tony, would you have to have access to the Mass General, would be able to pull that up?
What is it?
The freeze? I can read it on the book.
Well, that freeze, I think you're referring to freezes the use for three years. So in other words, if the use changes within three years, that's what an A&R will protect. But it doesn't freeze anything else other than, so in other words, if, for example, the plan that's on the, on the, on the screen at the moment, let's just take Lot 2 for example.
Correct.
If you signed that plan, and within three years zoning were to change, this plan is protected from that zoning change for three years, same as, as a subdivision is protected for seven years from zoning changes. So that's what the freeze is for.
What about reapplication?
There's no, there's no statute that prevents a landowner from changing their lot lines as many times as they want. I mean, obviously, most of them wouldn't want to because of the fee factor, but there isn't anything that I, that I'm aware of that prevents a landowner from changing the lot lines every year if they chose to do so for some reason.
The, the, the concern I have is that the developer can't piggyback the freeze, the freeze provisions. That's where I think we, we need to have some clarification on piggyback.
If the Board would like clarification, I can reach out to Town Council, but, but if that's what the Board wants, I will reach out to Town Council.
So I just want to make sure that we have the, the record of the dates right, so when we talk about, do we talk about the plan that was submitted May 27 of 2021? So May 27 of 2021 had a request for parcel A to be divided off of map 82, lot 14A, not to be considered a viable lot. So that, that endorsement ended up going, was not endorsed by the planning board, and ended up going for construction approval through the town clerk's office, Plan Book 65, page 405, excluding parcel A. And then there was an 81X filing that, I'd have to look at, get the date on that. The 81X filing is May 4 of 2022. And the 81X basically took that, took that unendorsed from the planning board but endorsed by constructive approval, parcel A, and joined it with what we're sitting now is the upper portion of Lot 2. So to read specifically, I don't know if we wanted to pull that up and review that, that Mass General law, Chapter 48, subsection six. The filing of an A&R plan also quote freezes state environment, oh, I'm sorry, the filing of an A&R plan quote freezes the use of the land under the zoning in effect at the time of the submittal for a period of three years, beginning with the date of the endorsement of the plan. So whether we're talking about the constructive approval endorsement, or we're talking about the 81X, I mentioned those two dates previously, this period may not be extended by later submittal of a preliminary plan, so as to piggyback the alternative freeze provisions of Mass General law, Chapter 48, subsection six. That, that, that right there is, is, we're well within any three-year timeframe of those two dates, obviously, one of them being an expiration in 2024. So you'll, you'll read on that, Tony, is the, is that it's the, you're saying it's the use?
Yes. Form A is protected from use for three years.
So the form A that was constructively approved?
So in other words, if zoning changes within that three-year period, and it changed, it's residential, and, but the use changes, they change it to business, it's protected as residential, because that's what, that, the use changed. But if the, if the zoning changes as far as, let's say, frontage or area, the courts, it's not necessar, you know, there's that confusion of what's protected, but it's from the use, not necessarily a zoning change as far as dimensional, but the use itself.
Yeah, I don't see anything in here that says the use of the land. It talks about A&R as an approval of an A&R. So I'm, I'm completely conflicted in regards to what the definition would be.
Let me see, hold on. Okay. Submission of a definitive plan, or an approval not required plan protects the land shown on such plans for future zoning changes for a specified period of time. A definitive plan is afforded an eight-year zoning, while an approval not required obtains three-year zoning protection period. A definitive plan protects the land shown on such plan from all changes to zoning by a law. An approval not required plan protects the land shown on such plan from future zoning changes related to use. So.
So that's going from our, our bylaws that?
That, well, that's quoted from the A&R handbook, which talks about a lot of the case law that you have there. Yeah, so the land shown shall be governed by the applicable provisions of zoning in effect at the time of the submission to such plan for a period of three years from the date of endorsement that the approval is not required. So whether a plan requires approval or not is, in the first instance, determined by Chapter 41, Section 81L, which defines subdivision. Plan of order approval is not required, the plan may be entitled to a use freeze. Questionable phrase contained in the statute relative to the zoning protection afforded approval not required plan is, the use of the land shown on such plan shall be governed. And then we get into the cases.
Yeah, the, yeah. Any other Board members have any comment in regards to that point? Make sure that we're clear on.
But if the Board is looking for, but if the Board is looking for a legal opinion, I will reach out to Town Council for legal opinion. That would require a further extension request from the applicant for, to extend the 21-day period. I know there was the, you know, the issue that 2021, there was a form A that was denied by the planning board. Unfortunately, there was not a filing done with the town clerk, which made it constructively approved, and once that took place, that, you know, that's what changed it. The plan before you, though, it meets the frontage requirements, it meets the area requirements for the pork chop lots. There was a question the last time by Mr. Kement regarding any resource areas on the property. Have you addressed that?
On the, on the A&R?
Yeah.
On the checklist, great. Well, it's, it's, it's really unfortunate that we find ourselves in the situation that we're in today. Clearly, the Board's painted into a corner where right and wrong, in our opinion, just don't exist. You know, over the past years, the applicant with counsel took advantage of a bad situation that the Town of Hanson was in, when the planning office was lacking the leadership in the office to be able to properly file a previously denied A&R request and got construction approval. I'm not sure if the history has been inclusive of the A&R coming forward today, which is something that was really ringing up about the timeframe with the freeze. So the Board really is up against itself, you know.
Can I, can I speak for them?
No, sir.
Okay.
You know, what the Board has before today is, for lack of a better term, in my opinion, salt of the moon again, about the way that regulation and law exist, where we as a Board are elected to do right and wrong, or right by the regulation. But through litigation or through representation, you can find loopholes anywhere. And it's very difficult, because we as a Board, we hear quite often things such as members just being here to say no. And that couldn't be any further from the truth, because the five members of this Board in our planner office do things by the regulations. Unfortunately, there are some things, when you get crackerjack, that take that regulation and put pie in our face and egg on our heads. We've had it multiple times with not only A&Rs, but also with subdivisions in this town. And our citizens ask us why. So on these minutes tonight, they're going to need to know why. So when they can review things later on down the road, they'll know why now, whether it's never been stated before, it's being stated this evening. If anybody needs any clarification on what I'm speaking about, they can reach out to me from now until my last breath, and I'll explain to them that our town boards and committees have regulation and then loopholes that really put us against the wall. It's, it really is a shame. I don't even want to bother going back through the entire history of what I think that this Board, and I'm not speaking for everybody, I'm speaking for myself and my opinion about it, would consider all of this to be a subdivision. But somehow, we're back at it again, where an A&R is being forced to come before us for approval. And the town planner is absolutely correct. Do the two lots have frontage on a way? They do. Lot one has frontage on a private road, which has recently been put before the town to be accepted as a public road, and Lot two has frontage on a public way. That is the only thing that the planning Board now can do, is to sign this A&R off of that regulation. As the Chair, I would ask the Board for a motion of no action. What's the will of the Board?
So move.
Motion's been made. Second, motion's been made and seconded for the Board to have no action. Is there any discussion in regards to that motion?
What, kind of curious, in what direction you want to add it. I mean, if, if our town planner's saying conforms, what are we going to gain by not approving? Can I speak?
No, sir.
I have my shift.
Guess we'll have to see that after. I think it makes sense.
Well, will he get it on a?
The applicant?
Yeah.
I'm sure the applicant knows how to take care of constructive approval.
That's what will happen, probably?
Yes, yes. You're beyond the 21 days at this point, so yes. Unless they grant you an extension of, for further action or investigation, then yes. Once the 21 days, once you're beyond the 21 days, that decision becomes constructively approved.
Any other questions in regards to the motion? So we have a motion on the floor, property seconded, motion made by Mr. Kement, property seconded by Mr. Cohen, in regards to the Board taking no action. All is in favor is signified by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Is that your answer? That's all we can do here. 5-0, Tony, for no action about the planning board. A little bit late going into Board business. We have a 6:45, approval not required, Lakeside Road, map 79, lot 26. We'll take a free going to get collected. If you look on your planning board meeting minutes, we're going to item five.
Item five. I don't have any, that must be outside.
Uh, a group that is, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, that's right. So before you, ladies, ladies and gentlemen, are, I'm going to read this into the record. You have a short piece there?
No, I got, I'm just going to log.
Hey, the agenda's up on the screen, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. 6:45 p.m., approval not required, Lakeside Road, map 79, lot 26-1, 202 Lakeside Road, map 79, lot 26-2A, map 79, lot 26-2. Applicant Lori Blum, prepared by Land Planning Incorporated. Town Planner.
So this plan was submitted last week by Land Planning. It's a, three lots that were shown on a Form A plan approved in 2008, and what they're, the 2008 plan, you have three lots here, what is known as lot 26-1A, which is 202 Lakeside Drive, Lakeside Road, I'm sorry, lot 1B and lot 2B. Lot 1B under the 2008 plan, and the engineer can correct me if I'm wrong, was shown as a pork chop lot, and now what you have are three lots that will conform to the zoning frontage for that area, which is 150 feet at the street and 150 feet of the setback requirement. I think the representative may be able to provide the Board with a little more explanation, because there are a few parcels there, A, B, and C.
Parcel Gary Rex from Land Planning.
Mr. Rex, thank you.
Parcel A and parcel C are being added to the, this is called 1B, the middle lot, to make the frontage of 150 and also give you the width of 150, all the, 100 feet back. And parcel B is being added to the land, the existing house at 202, and that's the reason we did that, is she, it runs pretty much near the wetland line, a lot of the new law line, which she just wanted to have as much upland as she could have next to her house. So we made that, that parcel, like, it's going to be going with that line. Basically, it's, this is going, it's in conservation, it's going back and forth, so it's going to the state, and this is being done just to make the three lots meet. make the three lots meet the standard lot configurations instead of having that retreat lot and help with access of driveways off of Lakeside that they come to parcel up eventually, become a common driveway at one point.
A common driveway?
Yes. Not shown on here, obviously, because it's it's on the site plan as far as conservation, for what the hell. Like, actually, I did, I highlighted a little thing here just so you could see.
Yeah, that'd be great. You can talk to the board too if you want.
There's actually no comment.
Yeah, there's no comment, right?
No, there's no regulation for it or against it at the time. So the building inspector, we've got motions, fire the pod, and everybody make the right size driveways to get back to the house, get the fire pod and turn around. And also due to the wetlands of having to fill a certain amount of wetlands that conservation agreed, we can do what we're going with.
We need to validate that.
Just want to lay this down. Just highlight it with the driveway.
Mr. Chair? The fire pod requires a sprinkle of buildings?
Sprinkle of buildings, that, I'm not sure.
Yeah, so.
That's past my.
Tony, we've been able to fire off an email. I thought that we went through this exact exercise with former chief about common driveways and requirement for sprinkling.
I would have to look that up.
Yeah, I think for some reason it just throws up a red flag, something about common driveways and sprinkling about having the requirement for fire apparatus.
Okay.
So we'll find, we'll get clarification on that.
Sure.
For some reason, I think that, but hey, you never know. It could have gotten hung up and not sent to the drunk job. Who knows? That crap happens too.
Sure.
Pardon me, French.
The only other thing is just to recall, proof of.
Right, right, yeah, it's just a reconformation, right. I just, I thought that there was something that went up above the common driveway.
I don't think we have any proof. What was that?
We should. I thought that we had.
This is the town meeting, did we ever approve that?
I don't think Tony was even telling him.
Do you have, yeah, there's no regulations for common driver. I actually have, I actually have written up a bylaw for common driveway, but we just didn't have time to bring it forward.
Because I could swear that the former town planner had had something that was in there. Because we had a meeting with Chief Thompson, and we sat talking to him. And that was the alleviation of it was, well, there was a sprinkler.
Mr. Chair, that was because of the distance setting.
Right, I was.
It was a little bit of that.
Okay, all right, we'll get clarification on that.
Okay.
Who are you, Mr. Kent?
Mr. Kement.
You know what a question I'm going to ask?
No.
Yeah, take a guess.
Wetlands?
Yes.
So the flag?
Right. And when were they flagged?
Well, on, yeah, what's the date? It's lots from three years ago.
Note number four under the general notes.
Note number four. September 2004.
Note number four.
And it's already gone through and been approved under the conservation of the flag.
Under general notes? Sorry, under general notes?
Under general notes, general note number four.
Oh, plans 576 of 2008.
The town has a, oh, the flags, okay. I didn't show the flags, but I showed the lines.
I remember this from 2008. It's on the conservation commission. I don't remember any details from back then. I know nothing.
Yeah, I remember his name.
I know. But I know it didn't go well, I do know that.
Any further comments from the board? Through you, Ms. Alice.
Tony? It meets all our requirements.
Yes, I mean, this was, this was a little history which I'm sure some of the board members probably already know. So the Form A was approved in 2008 for multiple lots. And then the owner also came before the planning board for adequate access determination and then actually did improvements to private way and paved this section of Lakeside Road and installed drainage. I think right now it's in binder course. It needs to be top coded. But, you know, they went through a lot of, to meet the requirements of the town. So it, it meets, it meets the frontage requirements. It meets the area requirements.
Any comment from Highway?
I have not seen anything from Highway. What they're doing, I'm sorry. So what they're doing is basically just redefining some of the lot lines.
Is a motion on the floor to approve the A and R as presented? Does anybody else have a need?
I got a question. Can I?
Yeah, Mr. Poydro, nice to see you.
Nice to be seeing you. Mr. Chair, yes, don't believe a rest. 72 Lakeside, here.
Appreciate it.
Just quick, it's a private road, Lakeside Road?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Right, and the approval doesn't make a difference whether it's private or public, is that correct?
It's not, sir.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure.
Just as long as it's approval that has frontage on a private and/or public way.
Okay, thank you for the education. The other piece I'm just wondering about is the wetlands, but that is really on the conservation side. So they're just doing here is redrawing the lines to meet the standards for approval.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's all I needed to know. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is a motion on the floor? Any further, or is there a second on the motion? Motion's been made and properly seconded by Mr. Benonado. Is there any discussion in regards to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the A and R as presented, Lakeside Road, map 79, lot 26-1, 202 Lakeside Road, map 79, lot 26, -2A, map 79, lot -26-2. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries unanimously, five to zero. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I always say no.
Appreciate you. Nice to see you, Mr. Poydro.
At least you're going to do that.
Let's say. We're going to need.
I guess I'm predictable, huh?
We're going to need everyone's signature on this.
I'm going to need every signature on this. You want to take the meeting out of order real quick? Is that, is that on here? We have a special pen?
So I would say sign, everyone has to sign the Mylar and at least one copy, one paper copy.
Uh, you sign this one up?
Oh, yeah, there you go.
Can I sign this?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah.
Oh, cool.
No, Tony has a program.
I didn't sign on the same line as the Mylar. Do we need to have a pen? Down the line? There were a lot of meetings about this back in 2008. I remember that. There's a lot to digest.
All proven point, and now we're going to sell it.
Yeah, I can see why.
It's costing the driveways.
Plus, you know, those terms, I see them, you know, I do a lot of work like in Dutch Berry and hanging and stuff, and I see a lot of these private driveways. And I get to be honest with you, I don't really like it. You know, the reasoning too, being, dealing with real estate is, you know, who's going to plow the driveway? What if somebody decides not to pay? There's a lot of stuff.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
So that's why, I think that's why we were looking at the bylaw and making some changes to that so that doesn't start to happen here.
I don't even know what the people do in that case, you know?
Go to court.
I guess, yeah.
Get it plowed anyway and, you know, sue them for the boundaries.
Right.
But it's a pain, you know, I mean, personally, I would advise a client to pass on it just based on that.
Oh, sure. No, I know. Okay. There you go.
Thank you, thank you, gentlemen.
You got it.
Thank you, have a good night. You too, have a good fourth.
This is the side one.
Okay, we're all done with our appointments. We're all done with public hearing, so we go on to board business. I don't know if agenda business is approval of the June 12th and June 26th minutes. What is the will of the board?
I just had a question on the June 26th minutes. Already down to we, we signed up on the office surprise, but it actually says zero here.
It says zero?
Yes.
It says zero?
That's my fault. You know what? So I will edit that. I will edit, I will edit that section of the minutes to, for the invoice.
Okay, great.
And only one, only one mistake per meeting.
Any other questions in regards to the minutes?
My brother, I'm satisfied. I'll make a motion to approve the June 12th and June 26th minutes.
Motion's been made for June 12th and June 26th consent agenda, or consent approval? Is there a second? I'll second. Motion's been made by Mr. Cohen, seconded by Mr. Kement in regards to a consent approval for June 12th, 2023, and June 26th, 2023. Any discussions, uh, no, maybe. Any discussion in regards to that motion? I do have a point, and I will be able to vote on the minutes. I've reviewed the audio recording from the June 26th meeting five times. Any other discussion in regards to the motion? Seeing none, also favors signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries five to zero, minutes are approved. Moving on, the agenda for board business. Discuss and endorse board member's signature authorization form for plans and any related documentation. Tom Planner?
in conjunction, no, I should say conjunction, in conformance with Section 81P Mass General Law, Mass General Law, section, chapter 80, wow, Section 81P and 81X, to allow Mr. Campbell to be the, as chairperson, to endorse the plans on behalf of the board. So the second form would be a list of signatures of current board members. So you'll have one that goes to the land court and one that goes to the Plymouth County Registry deeds. So what needs to happen is the one that where it's just all members signing, you don't need a vote. But the one that allows the chair to sign on behalf of the planning board has to be a vote by the rest of the members, granting him the authority to do such.
And in my absence, if that was to happen again, it would be all members?
All the members could sign.
What's all the board?
I said go for it.
Is that a motion? Motion to approve the single consent on forms. Is there a second? Motion's been made by Mr. Kement, seconded by Mr. Cohen for consent of the chair to sign and endorse forms on behalf of the board. Second. Any discussion with that? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Five, five to zero.
All right, so the.
And you need to sign, so they need a sign saying that that's approved, right?
Yeah, so this, the first two pages I'm going to pass around, I'm going to need everyone's signatures.
Do you want, they have red pens, do you want this in a different colored pen?
Oh, I can.
Okay, there you go. Two copies.
We're doing a red pen?
What does a copy do? It'll be black again, right?
Yeah.
Is it red?
Oh, I moved it wrong spot. Oh, that's good. I have my glasses on. Do I sign here? Oh, I see what happened to that.
Just need to sign next to your name.
There were two copies.
It's two copies.
This one, you can do it on the red one.
Yeah. I'm trying to take Don Ellis's place. He might have to cross it out.
Can you print another one, Tony? Do you want to print another one? John sign next to Don's name.
Is this the second one?
Yeah.
So we're doing, do this, right here, my friend.
There you go.
Right there. Is this the second copy?
Yeah. Because one is the registry and one's.
Motion carries this one?
Yeah, which one was that one to?
This was the names and signatures of planning board members.
At the top though, too, who was it addressed to?
Uh, Plymouth County Registry.
Actually, we're going to need to. You just signed on the line.
Gentlemen. Bring your glasses.
So you're here. There. You say they don't have a line. They evidently could just do. Town Hall, yeah. Is there a printer on here for you to print it?
Uh, because of our current security measures, we wind up sometimes with issues, depending on where you are in town hall, being able to connect. So we'll, I'll print out some new forms, and we'll go through this exercise the next meeting.
Want to do the next meeting?
On the 24th. Well, we have the vote, so we have, that one's all set to give the chair the authority to sign. The other, the other form, we'll just, we'll just do it on the 24th and get it squared away.
If you want, we can just come into the office and have a supervised signing. Guys, you point right over here.
Moving on, for board member's subcommittee updates. I'm going to defer to the town planner for the OCPC update. Was there anything on that zoom that you found riveting and?
Uh, no, they just went through the basic, basic agenda, you know, what their budget was, how much they've spent. I think they had, they voted in some new officers. But there wasn't anything that was outstanding.
Tom Hanson?
Yeah.
No, no talk about the two?
No.
Okay. Mr. Ellis, High Street Park meeting.
Well, we're still moving along, but it's a special phase, trying to get people to show up for meetings as usual. We hope to another meeting. We don't have a planning board meeting next Monday, do we?
No, certainly.
We have a Monday appointment for Monday. Hopefully, we'll move along. I have heard back from the the well person to check the well, I've got to meet him out there to give us an idea of what it's going to cost to check the old hospital well to see if we can use that for irrigation and so on, hopefully we can. Give you a lot cheaper than it would be to to have to drill wells because most everything, if you go into the bedrock, you're going to run into magnesium iron guarantees everywhere. This is the whole socialism thing, basically. But if you stay above the bedrock, you're usually getting a better water, less magnesium, less iron.
It's always ISO that, it's that nice rust color that you get on the curves. Isn't that beautiful? Can I ask you a question? Mr. Kement?
Who's the county chairman?
County chairman?
Yeah.
Of the park committee?
Yeah.
Joe Weeks.
Thanks, Mr. Ellis. Mr. Cohen?
Oh, um, we have Hampton Day going to the select board meeting tomorrow for approval of the date in September. Forget that exact date.
It was the 16th.
Sixteenth.
And the 23rd was the rain date.
Uh, September 16th and September 23rd, rain date, as Tony stated. So we'll be reaching out for volunteers and help for that pretty soon.
Thank you very much. Mr. Kement?
CPC. Our last meeting was canceled due to lack of a quorum. We have another attended meeting on July 12th, which is Wednesday.
Uh, must've been an hour, change is still a mark. Nothing planned for the summer, something, nothing planned for the summer, okay. Uh, seven oh five, we're a little bit late still. Discussion creation of policy and a regulation for the acceptance of private ways to public ways within Tannehill's and the town planner.
Uh, the there'd been discussion, uh, about creating a policy for a, we'll say a policy or a procedure that residents could consider taking to get their private ways as, accepted as public ways. This was a policy that was, uh, looked at by Jay Talaman of, uh, town council. And he created the language that you see here. There's about eight pages of it. And so the board, I don't know if you've had an opportunity to read through it and digest it and determine if there was any changes the board would like to see. See made. And then this would be presented to the select board to see if they would adopt it as, uh, policy for the town. And then more than likely go to town meeting for approval and maybe added to the general bylaw. This also, you know, the town can go this route or the town could look at going by and create an actual bylaw under Mass General Law. Chapter forty, section six N, I believe. Which is a bylaw that the town creates and will explicitly describe what type of work they will do on a private way. What responsibilities they will take. How much cost they will incur and what residents of that road would have to incur. So if there isn't necessarily an appetite of accepting a bunch of private ways that they may not, the town may not feel is up to standard. Using that bylaw will at least allow them to maybe do repairs, but not necessarily incur the full cost of those repairs.
Interesting question. So this, you're saying that we'll adopt this as a policy for us, right? In the hopes that the survival of the
Yes, this is, this is language that, I believe, has been worked on in the past by maybe other members of the board and my predecessors. And then I've forwarded this to Jay Talaman for his review and his critique and editing of how it should, what it should say. And so this is what we're looking at here.
So I guess my question is, we as a board can adopt this as a policy, so that
This would be a recommendation to the select board. So I think, so the, so the board, the planning board would say, hey, we came up with this policy. We'd like the select board to review it and consider it and then maybe move it forward to town meeting and adopt it under a general bylaw.
So this is a blueprint for a general bylaw?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so blueprint for adaptation of the existing bylaw?
Yeah.
Existing policy. It's not bylaw, it's existing policy.
Updating the existing policy of the bylaw that we have.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, I mean, you know
And this already, uh, private ways to public ways means
Yeah, I mean Well, yeah, I mean, for, uh, as we saw in May, you know, ten residents, the residents come together under citizens petition, they can petition the select board to the, the select board is the ones that are gonna lay out the way. You know, now the citizens can petition the select board to lay out that way, which they can refuse to, you know, they can
This helps the select board have a better understanding of what the planning board would already discuss.
Yes. So, um,
So it won't be a bylaw, it would be?
Not yet.
That's up to them.
Well, I mean, when they go to the final, they want it as a bylaw or you're proposing it as a policy?
Should be a bylaw.
It should probably go under the general bylaws. That's prob, that's where it would belong. It doesn't, it doesn't belong zoning, it doesn't belong in subdivision control. Those, you know, subdivision control has a mechanism for acceptance of ways. Uh, Mass General Law has an accept, uh, acceptance of ways. This is not a zoning bylaw, this is just a general bylaw trying to give direction for acceptance of, uh
So this is gonna go through the typical process of a, of a bylaw?
Yes.
Selecting, put it on their, uh, their warrant article and then move on.
Right.
Right, so what I would suggest is, you know, I'll resend this to the board members, take a look at it, see if there's anything you wanna change. If there isn't, then we can package it and send it over to the select board. And see if they'll
Endorse it.
Endorse it.
Do we have a copy for that tonight or?
I can get it to you, I can get this out to you tonight for sure.
So the intent is to, perhaps, hold on us in two weeks.
So you haven't sent this out to us or?
I think I've sent it out to you once before, but because we've sort of had to put it off, it's been, you know
There was, there was an edit that Jay made though. Wasn't there an edit towards the bottom about the, uh? He took out something about the
Yes, he did.
So this might be, this might be typical from that, that original segment. Yeah, so what, well, so the intent is to receive this from the town planner and then discuss and vote on it, potentially at the next meeting unless we had any edits.
Cool. Great.
Is there any movement on the all the ways, spreading like, is there any movement on that number two?
Yes, there were there was, um, town council looking at the, uh, I'm gonna, this is gonna be third party, so so town council is going through the process of the deeds and so forth, but they looked at the warrant and the way the warrant was written up talks about the subdivision as it stood in nineteen ninety-seven. It didn't include the two modifications that took place after that. So the town council believes to say, have all the I's dotted and T's crossed so that everyone is actually getting what they're supposed to and so forth.
Sure.
They're gonna go back to October town meeting and clarify that
Okay.
for a vote. Uh, so that those other two modifications are also part of that. So that way, when it all goes out and it's, the properties are looked at, it'll, they'll be understood that, yes, there was a plan done in nineteen ninety-seven and then there was two modifications done after that.
Okay. So can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
How do we stop this from happening again? And improve the political process? So that, you know, like, uh, I guess what I'm saying is like, developers come in and they point out to us that they don't have to, uh, you know, have the road accepted by the town. It's up to the people to look at. So is that something that we can change?
I just
I think I discussed that, what that, uh, private needing too.
I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that's necessarily up to the residents of the street, you know? It's just always a process that, that, you know, go for town acceptance when your road, when your road is done. Most of the times, developers want their bond money, that's always big. Now, obviously, the town of Hanson has had some issues with having to give back a bond money. When they felt that the road wasn't necessarily up to the, their standard, but the judge felt differently.
So it has to be the minimal.
So I guess, I don't know, I'm thinking about it, right? Like, you know, at the end of the day, you know, we sign off on these final things because we've got our asphalt and all that other stuff. And I'm wondering if we can have something added to either our rules and regulations or a bylaw that says that, um, the acceptance, acceptance of the road has to occur before we do our final sign off? Or is that against the law? Mr. Ellis?
Yeah, we did. And what we decided was that we would be part of the application when they had come in for the, uh, approval, whether they were planning on going private or are planning to have the town accept it. And then in doing so, if they say we want the town accept it, then we need to hold back more money to make sure everything is being done and completed to block rules and regs. I think it was something like that.
Right, but that doesn't stop them from making the decision to not go forward because, you know, for them, it's a financial burden for them to go forward with the acceptance of the road, right? So, um, you know, I would like, personally, I'd like to compel them to make sure because this whole private road problem is a result of the fact that these developers don't wanna spend money to get, um, approval for the roadway to be accepted, right? So, um, I guess my question is, how do we change that? Because I don't think it's a good policy to just allow these people to decide to not spend more money because it's better for them, whereas it's a real problem for the town, as we can all see.
Can the town in and of itself, instead of, in addition to making the private to public ways policy, can the town in and of itself make a bylaw that says we don't do private ways in Hanson?
I'm not sure that you can do that. But I'd have to look into that, to be honest with you. Because I had heard of like another community saying that they were not doing any public ways, that it was, everything was gonna be private.
Right. I also, Plymouth, I think they did something soon.
So I'd, I'd have to do a little research on that.
Yeah, we'll check that out and
Yeah, because, yeah, I mean, you, you can, you know, I want to say that, you know, yeah, you could say, look, this all, these all have to be private, you all have, you have, you have to give us all HOAs. We're not touching these roads. They're all have to be HOAs, they're all gonna have to take care of the roads themselves, they'll be private roads and never be accepted.
There'd be drainage and everything.
Right. You know, and there's some towns that have what the, some towns have done, um, basically, let's say, two, three and four lot subdivisions where they've relaxed the drainage requirements. But the flip side is, and they've granted more waivers, let's say, but the flip side is the road never, ever, in perpetuity, is going to become a public way. And the, and whoever gets on it has to know that, that it's never gonna be a public way. So
I have one other question.
Yeah, Mr.?
On the snow removal, it'll be a big issue if the town doesn't do it because a lot of them won't get done on time because they wait for private people to come in and, and take care of the roads and sand and plow. Could be a, a very large hazard for the town, for the people who live in there.
I mean, one, one, I suppose one way to try and hold the developer's feet to the fire comes down to lot releases. You know, saying, okay, look, you know, the expectation is, when they come in and they say, I wanna, I want, I need the three lots released and say this, well, you need to give us this and this and this, which is what's part of the process. They want a lot release, the, for the lot release, they have, they're expected to give you something in return, in performance.
Could the developer not just litigate that? And say that the town's holding my lot hostage? And we'd be back in the same situation that we were?
Yeah, I mean, they could.
Okay.
You know, they could. I mean, obviously, everything can be opened to litigation.
Just needs to stay continuing with the planning board being a conservative board.
And they don't even have to take, uh, take the lot option, they can use it, they can use money if they want, right? Now, that could be three options.
Yes, there's a, there's a surety covenant.
Yeah, long surety.
And they, and they get to choose all of those options, right? So we may not have the ability to say, you know, we're not gonna release this lot until you have the road accepted or whatever, you know, whatever it is.
Well, the thing is, yeah, the road accepted, you know, when you get to that point, you, you wanna have all the lots built on, obviously, because it's, it's final paving.
Right. But I mean, you need some kind of surety that it's actually gonna happen.
Right, right.
You know, it, it seems to me that there's a lot to this. But, you know, I, I think it would solve a lot of, at least going forward, because, you know, when we're not here anymore and it's a new board, they may not know enough to know. You know, it may take them a couple of years to come to that conclusion that that's a problem. And, uh, you know, with all these private roads, we've been here now for what, five or six years, trying to figure out what to do with private roads and it's been a nightmare, the whole, not a nightmare, but it's been, you know, kind of, uh, seems like not well thought out, I guess would be the best way to put it.
Right.
So I don't see why we can't think about, uh, yeah, having some kind of a bylaw or
It's been challenging for Hanson to say the least.
Oh, yeah.
Exactly, yeah. For the record and for anybody reading these minutes and listening to this recording, ten years from now, the Hanson Planning Board doesn't say no to everything. We have rules and regulations that we have to abide by and then we got loopholes from litigation that just, stick it with them.
I'll be, I'll be honest with you, uh, and I probably, I probably said this, in all the years that I was in the private sector, there was only one time I've ever seen a developer walk away from a road. The rest of them, they went through it because they wanted their bond money. Now, I can't think of anything that was being done differently in those communities that is different from Hanson. That, you know, so it's just odd, found it very odd that it's, so many of them will leave the money on the table and, you know,
Fifty people leave enough money.
If it's a thousand dollars, but, you know, I guess the, the big thing comes is, yeah, big money.
Do those towns, do those towns have labor council and land use council?
They did have, uh, they had town council, I don't know if there was any separation as far as labor and land.
Do they have, do they have, lack of a better term, do they have bulldog council that actually went and followed through with things?
It just seemed to be a good rapport with the planning board, they were just like, here's what the expectation was. I think maybe it could have, it could have been that some of these developers, a lot of them knew that they were gonna be coming back to that board for something else and that board was no different than Hanson, than this board to say, yeah, well, guess what, we're not gonna but, you know, maybe it was an unspoken rule or something that was talked about outside the building that you come forward and you don't do this, you can forget it. You're not gonna get, you're not gonna get anything through. You know, maybe it was just an unwritten rule and they knew it, I don't know, uh, but never
Truthfully, we have one developer who walked away from his responsibilities on one side of the road and now we've allowed him to build on the other side.
So another board is allowing to build across.
Yeah, but, you know, the, the point is that, you know, I, I think it's a loophole and I just wanna find a way to close it.
Mr. Ellis?
We had a discussion a few years ago with town council and town council said two things about getting roads finished and so on. One is that you don't wanna take land as collateral so that you finish it because you're not in the land business, the town is not. There's too many downsides could happen, that land might not perk, it might not be suitable or whatever, they said. So you gotta get enough money upfront. Now, what's happened to the town over the years is that when they went in for the subdivision approval, they got the subdivision approval and then they just drag their feet, the economy changes two or three times and they just walk away because they don't get an increase, there was nothing in there to increase the collateral to finish that because the cost of doing it had increased over the years, like it always does. Everything does, nothing stays the same, but there was nobody in there that was looking at it and saying, okay, you wanna start up? And now we need more, hold more money before we release any lots for you to build on. See, so it's, it's hard. But you gotta get a bond or whatever town council wants, cash is the best. But if you, if you get a bond, you gotta make sure the bond is getting renewed. You know, so there's, there's, there's no foolproof way.
Yeah, I mean, under, under the covenant, a lot of the times becomes the, the automatic rescission in more than one municipality is, that I've dealt with, uh, when I, was two years. You had two years to get the roads done or it was automatically rescinded. And so that, you know, or if you weren't gonna finish the road in two years, you had to go back to the planning board, explain why, and they would grant you an extension. But mostly it was, you know, keep moving. And just the, I guess, oversight, you know, big bond money and oversight.
Probably just have a rule that, uh, a rule that says every year we have to go back and look at, to see if there's enough money available to finish the road.
Yeah, usually the bonds never cover enough.
Right.
They never cover the cost of actually a town having to pay to have the road done.
I know for a fact Plymouth is one of the highest ones around for holding money. If, if your subdivision is a million dollars to put it in and stuff, they'll want you to have a million dollar coverage for all that to finish it, even though to finish the road was only a oh, I don't know, twenty thousand, thirty thousand dollars to finish the road, you know, double or triple it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not aware of, we'll say, a limit that a town can set for the bond? But I'm gonna inquire with town council on that to see if there is.
Can I ask a, a thought? Is it possible that, uh, under our rules and regulations, we could, uh, hold back money for the purpose of the acceptance of the road? Right, so that the developer would be more inclined to wanna have the road accepted because, you know, he's got money on the line at that point? Is this really what we're talking about?
Right, which is what the bond is. I mean, that's why most of them will follow through with getting the road accepted for more than one reason. One, they wanna get their money back. Two, they don't want the responsibility of back. Two, they don't want the responsibility of having to plow that road. You know, I mean, that, I mean, that's one thing, if you think about it. Um, the town of Hanson will go plow private roads for emergencies, right?
Mm-hmm.
You know, and imagine if you will, if, if the town said, you don't make that road public, we're not gonna plow it.
Right.
You're gonna plow it, you know? Uh, I mean, I mean, imagine, now imagine if you're, imagine if you're a developer, and if you're a developer and you're getting calls from, uh, all these folks that, that, you know, they have two feet of snow, they can't get out of their driveway. Soon later, the attorneys are gonna start getting involved. But, yeah, that, the bond lines are becoming the biggest thing.
Yeah, but, you know, the, the tough part though is, you know, there are some developers, like some that I've seen in this room where I'd say, you know, they'll, they'll, they'll do it because they value their reputation. But I've also seen a lot of developers in here that could care less about their reputation because they know they can just change their name next week. And, uh, so, you know, that's a gap I feel like needs to be closed so that, you know, at least if maybe if we somehow reference the fact that, you know, during the, um, you know, the, the hearing process that, you know, it's our expectation that the road has to be accepted and there's a bond that goes with that. I don't know if we can do that. I don't know the law laws.
Well, you have the performance guarantee. I mean, you could look at, you could look at the subdivision control law and see if, the Hanson subdivision control law and see if there's any more title language you could put in there. Yeah.
Okay. So Tony's gonna send it to everybody. We'll review that, uh, have another discussion abroad or, uh, on the board business for the next meeting. Moving on, under administration, town planner update. Tony.
So I, town planner update. Uh, I filed a grant for Pratt Place. Uh, the state has what's known as a small bridge grant and there's a hundred thousand dollars towards design and then there's half a million dollars towards construction. And this is not, I think that Pratt Place, based on all the information that they provide, would fit in that criteria. Uh, so the deadline was June thirtieth. I was able to get in the application and necessary paperwork. So that's being reviewed by the state and the local, the bridge, our district bridge inspector. So if Hanson gets it, well, there's a hundred thousand dollars towards doing the design for new bridge over in Pratt Place because it needs it. Uh, and then the second phase would be applying for a grant for five hundred thousand dollars towards construction.
Is everybody familiar with Pratt Place and what's going on?
Is that, is that a public road?
It is. It's public.
Public road?
Yeah, public, I believe it was eighteen twenty-seven. So, um, you know, it's, it's under review. We'll see what happens. No guarantees. Uh, and then the select board's gonna be opening the warrants for October town meeting and, uh, Stone, Stone Wall Estates was the other project that was looking to get, we'll say, I'll use the term re-accepted because it actually was voted by the select board in two thousand and six to be accepted and then voted at town meeting to be accepted. And then there's just, within the hundred and twenty days, it fell, didn't follow through. So it needs to go back to town meeting for a, a vote. Uh, so there's that. And, uh, the MBTA regulations, I have a district that I've created, a preliminary district. I'd like to show the board that in the next, um, meeting along with, uh, hopefully preliminary zoning regulations. There, a template offered up by the Commonwealth for zoning, you know, here's a zoning template so that we could, you could use, we could use it to, uh, as a foundation. Um, problem, finding is time. There really, you know, the time is just catching up with you. It no matter, you know, I think they haven't given towns enough time, you know, to really be able to, you know, by the end of two thousand and twenty-four, everything's supposed to be done. And I'm not sure that a lot of towns are gonna be able to make that deadline. But I have a district. It requires seven hundred and fifty units capability. It has seven hundred and fifty-nine unit capability. And I, so I worked with Old Colony Planning Council on that. And so, uh, we formulated the district. Uh, I have the regulations. Need to just kind of have a draft. And then there will be, supposedly there'll be another round of technical assistance grants. Uh, should be coming up shortly. They would apply for to help finish out the process. So, um, in the next meeting, that's about it. This other thing I'm not gonna discuss.
The second?
Uh, that thing adds up to the, that's up to the.
Do you want me to read it?
If you'd like to.
To the board, I wanna read into the record, July tenth, twenty twenty-three, Town Hanson Planning Board, Regarding Town Planner Resignation. Give board members a writing, this letter to a phone to Town Hanson and I will be resigning my position as town planner and Old Colony Planning Council, Council Delegate for Hanson effective August third, twenty twenty-three. I'd like to thank the board for giving me the opportunity to serve as town planner. I've enjoyed working with the planning board and attempting to move forward, the town, moving the town forward with the use of technology and implementation of policies that conform to local and state regulation and address the needs of the residents. I've enjoyed working with all the members of the board who have been very helpful in assisting me in the execution of my duties as planner. I've enjoyed meeting various residents and assisting them with their inquiries and coordinating with the various departments the best course of action for them to achieve their goals. I believe Hanson has a bright future with proper planning, can be a model community in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that other municipalities would wish to emulate. I can also, I can be available to assist the town in the search for the new town planner that will achieve the town's goals for the future. Respectfully, Antonio de Fries, PLS, SEAPA Town Planner. When is this taken, please?
August third.
Biden?
August third. Uh, Kim has done a fantastic job when she, since she's come on as admin. She's picked up on things very quickly. We're working closely together. So I think that she can handle the administrative part, uh, without any problem. And I'll work closely with her up until that point, uh, so that, you know, she'll understand when someone comes in and says, I have a Form A, here's what's the expectation and the checklist. It's, you know, here's what they've expected, fees, if it's a subdivision. Uh, I'd like to sit down with the chair and at least the vice chair prior to me leaving. So I'd like to give you a list of what, um, was, is open and then I think that as a board you should focus on and go after. Um, and then, and then go from there. You know, I've enjoyed working with all of you. I think you're, I think you're a good board. You know, some people might not think so, but I think you're a good board. Yeah. Uh, you're not anti-development, you know, but you're, you, you follow the rules. That's what, that's what it matters. You know, the rules are there for everyone to follow. It's unfortunate that, you know, you have some situations where the rules, you're stuck having to follow them. You know, you may not agree with it, but unfortunately you have to, you have to go with it. So, uh, but I think Kim's done a fantastic job. I think she'll do a great job, uh, administering, uh, while you, while you look for a new planner. Uh, I think maybe, maybe there'll be someone locally, you know, that might be willing to take on the job or possibly some of the critics out there may be willing to take on the job. Yeah. So, uh, but I'll try, you know, I'm trying to get as much done before that date. And I, I think you have a good foundation and trying to send you in a good direction, you know, and I'll be available, you know, after that if you have any questions or, you know.
So you don't get anything from the board in regards to acceptance of the letter because we're not your appointing authority for appointment. So.
No, I've had.
And I'm really not in an endorsing mood. So, correctly, I'm gonna say, I don't even wanna sign it.
No, I, I, it was not an easy decision. I'll say that. It was not an easy, easy decision. Not at all. I had to think long and hard because I'm not one to just walk away from, uh, it's not, you know, giving up or quitting because there's a lot of things that I've started that I'd like to see go through because I think they'd be good for Hanson. Um, I'm not sure everyone agrees with it, but it's a case of, I'm not doing things, I don't, I'm not one to get offended. If people don't agree, that's fine. It's up to the will of the people. Let the people decide, you know. If, I'm just making suggestions to try and solve problems. That's it. You know, there's no, there's nothing political behind it. There's nothing. Just trying to solve, solve problems. So, uh, but I think we'll hopefully send you in a good direction.
I think we've been really lucky to have you and, um, maybe there's a deep fryer sway in the next, uh, in the future, possibly. But, but I, I do like the plans that you put forth and, um, hope to see those continue. I hope the plans really fall through.
Yeah, I mean, you know, yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to see that. I'd like to see the town move forward with those because I think that would, you know, solve a lot of issues. Um, you know, but hey, anything's open to suggestions.
It's a fifty-one percent rule, all of it. You know, when you go to town meeting, fifty-one percent of people say yay, then it's good to go.
That's true. It's, it, like I've said, it's, it's all the will of the people. You know, the people decide, you know. I'm just, like I said, trying to present solutions to the problems that you're running into, you know.
I've been doing this, I think, way too long. I think we're going twenty-something years. And in that time, I think you're probably the best planner I've seen in the office.
Thank you.
Just wanted to let you know.
Appreciate that.
To piggyback on, on what the other board members have said and to have something again entered into the, into the public record. And not at all to say that this is any, uh, derivative of, of your letter today. But we find all too often that the seats that we sit in as elected members after election and also the hired staff such as the town planner position, you often feel that it's a thankless job. And you often have a finger pointed, an allegation, an investigation for malfeasance that just doesn't exist because somebody is slighted or they don't understand the regulation. And instead of coming in and just educating yourself about the regulation and the rules and remaining ignorant to the fact, it allows bad politics and allows bad policy to go around. There's never been a time where you as our town planner, if I ever thought that that was ever in question. And that's the, the best thing that we as a board could have asked for. And so whoever's gonna be filling in their shoes needs to be able to maintain that same level.
Thank you. Yeah, that's, you, you, it, you just have to be, I'm, that's one of the reasons why I, I don't live in the town I work in because I have no allegiance to anyone. I have, there's nothing to connect me to anyone.
Conflict, you're interested?
No conflict. I'm here to do a job to the best of my ability to assist the town and the planning board and the administration of the subdivision control law. That's it.
Well, I just want to remind him, he signed twelve years.
I thought it was twelve.
Yes.
I thought it was fourteen.
You just don't remember because you had a blood wipe sign in front.
Was it in the office? Joking, joking. Uh, on the agenda, uh, next scheduled meeting is Monday, July twenty-fourth. What's the word of the board?
Uh, I'll make the motion to, uh, have the next planning board meeting to be July twenty-fourth.
Next meeting, motion has been made. Is there a second?
Can I say go for it?
And there's a second for Mr. Kevin, probably made by Mr. Cohen and second by Mr. Kevin for Monday, July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, same time, same back channel. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Vote if you carries five to zero. Is there anything else for the, uh, good of the order by the board? There is something that I, I would like to bring up that I've, I've been doing a little bit of research on and I'll propose this a little bit further down the road. I just want everybody to know this is on a, a seminar pot for me and I've brought it forward to the front burner. I'm doing a lot of research right now in regards to our commercial zoning and the requirement for bollards. Uh, so I, I've got some research that I'm doing and, uh, there's a, there's a gentleman I've been speaking with that's a, a not-for-profit that has a lot of experience with this. Uh, and this is based off, anytime you turn on the news, any given week, you turn the news on, you see another citizen getting crushed by a car because it went through the storefront, you know. So, I mean, it, it's happened extremely local to, to our town here. So, and something as an ounce of prevention of, of putting in a concrete vault that prevents all that. I drove around town and I saw many storefronts that have lack of, uh, you know, lack of security. So that's something I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna propose down, down the next couple months on the road.
Yeah, there might be something you might consider, Mr. Cho's, making part of the site plan approval process, adding, maybe amending the site plan bylaw.
Yeah, right. There was a quick, just not to get down the meat about it, there was a quick, there, there is a quick blanket to be able to do this, that the town adopts, uh, uh, adopts regulation that all parking lots mean ADA requirement, which we don't have, amazingly not.
That's state.
Right. What, you have to, you have to further adopt it in the town.
No.
Yeah.
Mandatory.
Yeah, I went down this crazy rabbit hole and found out that it has to be further adopted. If you set that blanket documentation, ADA requirements now automatically, um, require bollards. So we'll probably see that going in over at the property on Main Street, but this would be retroactive. See if there's any kind of incentive. I don't wanna get too much off the agenda, but I, I was looking at, I, I thought as a planning board, it's something that we should recognize. It is, for, for something very easy. It's very simple, I would think. Uh, anybody else have anything?
Motion adjourned?
Mr. Ellis made a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Properly seconded by Mr. Cohen. Any discussion regards to the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? We are adjourned at seven fifty-six.